I'm delighted by my watching it is started.
She may try to watch.
But probably in terms of when the central council meeting, they probably 2021. Do the land acknowledgement statement, uh, you get our reading by acknowledging that the land that we gather is the traditional characteristic of the Anishinaabe and quote the Assomini people, acknowledging the one ball and soon any disclosures of their interest. Thanks. Seeing none. And we'll move right into our staff report for the central fire station tender results. And I imagine that.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, we have with us this morning, uh, several members of the project team, uh, including our prime consultant and architect, Emilio Raimondo, as well as our project managers, uh, David Tram and Eric Duva. And we also have with us via Zoom, uh, Anthony from Manticcon Engineering and Jeff, uh, who's also attending from Raimondo and Associates. They've made themselves this morning and available to answer any questions that council may have. What we have before us, uh, is the result of the tender process. From the initial concept of design until today, uh, and in keeping with council's priorities, the project team has taken a middle of the road approach in developing a station that balances cost, durability, and efficiency, while ensuring that the result not only meets the needs of the community today, but prepares us for years to come. As council may recall, in the third quarter of 2021, the project team undertook a contractor prequal and established a list of pre-approved contractors to bid on the construction. The result of that process provided the township with a list of seven contractors. In the fourth quarter of 2021, council directed staff to engage the services of our project manager and in Q1 of 2022, UEM consulting was, uh, was selected. Since that time, they've been actively engaged in getting up to speed and reviewing the project. And as directed by council, once the review was complete, the project was sent out to tender to the seven pre-approved contractors and a site meeting was held on February 15th. During the tender process, several contractors and their sub-trades requested additional time to obtain and prepare accurate quotes. Given the current market conditions, the closing date was extended to March 22nd. Upon the closing, five bids were received and the project team conducted a review of those bids, including the alternate pricing as requested by council, which included items such as the barn renovation, an alternate HVAC design, and precast fire cisterns. Upon the completion of the review, TRP Construction was determined to be the lowest bidder of the pre-approved contractors with a base bid of $5,983,000. And when factoring in the reduced costs for precast cisterns, this lowered the price to $5,950,000. TRP also included a price of $200,000 to complete the renovation of the barn, which was less than the estimate presented to council in Q3 of 2021, and also less than the new than a new building that was quoted to staff. While staff recognized the keep to keep the project costs low, staff needs to stress to council that the fire station was not designed with storage or training space and that the barn was originally intended to meet those needs. And should council choose to demolish the barn and remove it from the project, council will need to consider alternative solutions to meet those needs immediately following the completion of the fire hall. TRP also provided a lower price of $41,000 for the alternate HVAC design. However, it should be highlighted that the alternate design did not accurately capture the alternate request of council as a mechanical engineer could not make the recommendation recommended system work as thought. The engineering firm has provided a memo detailing the reasons for this variation. And ultimately, the engineer and team recommend the original HVAC design that was proposed, given the long-term efficiency and reduced maintenance costs be be used. UEM has collected and supported all information and memos provided for council's information, appendix A. The treasurer has developed several funding strategies for council's consideration in appendix B. And staff have reviewed these options and have a recommended or preferred strategy, which which aligns with council's priority of sustainability and minimal impact tax. At this point, I'd ask the treasurer to speak to those strategies.
Thank you. So, uh, through the mayor's call of council, so appendix B just outlined some of the financing strategies. So none of them are really set in stone until we're ready to go out for the debenture. Um, there are just some options. The first option being to debenture the full project cost. Uh, the second option, which is kind of a some use of a, uh, infrastructure levy or a certain reserve as well as debenturing the rest of the project. And the third, the third use is maybe potentially, uh, use of, um, multiple reserves, maybe the infrastructure reserve. I know there was talk at the, at previous meeting of budget naming, uh, in terms of use of the modernization funds. We could potentially utilize that, uh, as well as as debt financing and, uh, use of some of the development charges for the new construction. So again, these are just kind of samples. There's plenty of options that we can, that we can utilize, uh, and different reserve funds that we can bring in to try to lower the adventure cost. Uh, but this is just kind of to put some numbers to paper. So council has an idea of, of kind of where staff is thinking and what the line we would go down in terms of the strategy for financing the project.
Okay. Anything further from?
At this point, we'll just answer any questions that council may have.
Okay. So we won't make a motion, put it on the floor. We'll have all our discussion first and emotional rise of all discussion. Afterwards, so I open the floor to the council who would like to begin the review of the session. But councillor.
First of all, thank staff and and project team for reports, our reports, our reports. Some of those reports have been waiting for a week, waiting for all last day because it's been the works for 20 years. Like what I'm seeing, that would be two options and whatnot. Um, I want to hear from my colleagues. I know I'm saying this, so.
That's right.
That's what I'm doing. Okay. Because I'd like to hear from my colleagues and see if you're listening. I know where I want to go with this. Um, it's been a long time of waiting. A lot of people are waiting for this to happen. I hear a lot of feedback from people. My data is positive and it's basically going on this.
Thank you. All right. Thanks. Councillor. We missed that. Again, this is, I look at my, my, this is $6 billion. This is way beyond what we should be spending as a company for my own. And I've had a number of hard cases, bestie, and all of that, a question for this, but it's too much money. So in the council, then, please favor, she gets those calls, pay the other calls. But anyway, it's too much money. Okay. Thank you. Anybody wish to discuss more detail in regards to, so there's two very clear opinions over here. Anybody want to get into these dollar amounts and the debenture payments and, uh, anything like that? Any discussions there? Councillor Crivlin?
Thank you, Chief Mayor. Um, we're probably all just making an open comment, but, um, um, I will go with the financial part of it. Again, I'm a head staff. If there's more options, there continues to be more options being brought forward. Um, and, uh, I think that's leaving us with a pound forward. Um, the one that is option three, uh, so, um, what I'm seeing here, uh, with this option, I want to be, uh, just get clear on it is, uh, that's giving us, if we use the serial approach, um, the opportunity to then fund, uh, the asset, we wish to put some of those, uh, funds into infrastructure. So it's mentioned a little bit in the, in the report, which you just discussed, if that's a decision that we also can make today. Uh, if we choose that path, then the difference would be able to go into infrastructure on this type of thing.
So through the mayor's councillor, Crivlin. So yeah, so with the serial, uh, type of loan, so the, the upfront cost, so the, the debenture payments in the first year would be the highest and they would reduce each year. Uh, it does have the least amount of financing cost. So we gave the least amount of interest over the term of the loan. Uh, and it would be staff recommendation that each year, the amount that the debenture was reduced by 10 or 11,000, let's say, for example, would be circulated back into capital funding. So it would either be contributed, uh, to a reserve or so we essentially have council approved, uh, which we don't have to decide necessarily today, which what the terms of the loan are going to be. This is just kind of an example. So so council can see kind of what the payments look like under these terms, uh, and to make a decision. I understand that council, uh, priority is to pay the least amount of interest as possible. So I, I anticipated that cereal would be favorable amongst council. Um, so yeah, it would be our recommendation that, uh, the amounts would be contributed back into a reserve. So essentially council would be, although a more difficult decision for a higher amount in the, uh, in the early years, uh, you would essentially be preparing the next or councils of the future, uh, to be able to pay cash for, let's say, a new construction of a different fire station or the acquisition of a tanker in the future or something like that.
Right, Councillor Crivlin?
Thank you. Then if I could continue, um, again, there's a lot of flexibility I can see for where we land perhaps today, but could we actually lean into that's where we want that to go? So I'm, um, sort of looking for whatever, uh, that model is to start self-funding the infrastructure of the actual asset that we're taking on. So, um, I would be more comfortable knowing it's actually targeted for capital needs of five or $10 million asset. We'll always be short otherwise. So if we keep taking on assets, that's not going to serve community that doesn't really grow, you know, doesn't have the growth potential. So, um, how far can we go as a council then, uh, to lay out those guide rails for a decision that would, you know, try to narrow down as best we're able to, uh, on that financial plan for this asset. So, uh, again, I, I may not be able to go that far in current council. And then maybe part two of that is, um, if, uh, if it is a, if it is, if it is a go-forward situation, do any of these decisions that are outlined here, I believe there's a board by law. Do any of them take this past our current board by law as a, as a council? So I realize that's about two parts. So.
So through the mayor's councillor, Crivlin. So, I mean, uh, council can direct staff, um, in any way they choose today, depending on how the meeting goes. So staff can take direction that, uh, council's preference would be the serial debenture and even the length uh, of the debenture if, if that's the wishes of council today. We can certainly take that direction because we will have to, um, complete the initial application for the loan, although we won't be receiving the funds, uh, right away. We do, we will have to complete that application. Um, unfortunately, we can't start that until we have council approval. So once, uh, so if the, if the project is approved and we have council approval, uh, then staff can start working on the preliminary application for the funding and we can outline council's desires in terms of, um, term and, and whether or not they prefer serial or amortization. Um, in terms of the board by law, uh, do you mean the debt by law? Uh, yeah. So our current debt capacity is, uh, we have an internal threshold of 10%. Uh, so it's, it's hard to say whether or not we'll exceed that, um, knowing what could come down the line before we issue this debt. Uh, so if that's the case, then council would have to, um, waive that bylaw in, in order to issue that debt.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Crivlin. Councillor McCallum?
Thank you. Just while I'm on the bottom of financing, um, so if we choose a serial adventure, which I would assume that would be the way we go, wouldn't it just, uh, the annual payment just be funded out of the infrastructure levy? Like I, I'm just not following your thinking about putting extra money back into reserve. If the levy, the infrastructure levy itself is going to continue to grow, um, the payments, the payments lower over time on the serial adventure. It just leaves more money in the levy for other things. I don't follow putting, like, are you suggesting that, you know, we start at the, whatever the figure is, 495, make that payment constant and then throw up the 20 or the, I'm looking at the 20-year pace, so I'll stick with that. And, but I don't, I don't get, are you suggesting that we leave that roughly constant? And then so in, um, 2042, that would, that would mean there's almost $200,000 of of other money going somewhere else. I don't get that. Like, the levy can just support it. And what's left in the, in the levy year over year can be spent on other capital. So I need you to just explain that.
So through the mayor's councillor, you're more, uh, so that is a strategy, certainly funding it through the infrastructure levy. However, the strategy that was opposed or proposed, not opposed, um, in the last financing strategy was to build it into the budget. So as you can recall, um, this year we increased, so two years ago, we added 100,000 into the fire budget to start supporting the financing, uh, repayments. Uh, this current budget, we increased that to 200,000. So if it is built into the base budget, then it would be built in at a certain amount and as opposed to reducing it each year if it was built into the base budget, as opposed to reducing it each year or having it be absorbed with other operating costs. The strategy would be to circulate it back into capital funding and capital spending. Alternatively, depending when we have to issue the debt, we likely won't get up to the 500,000 by the time we have to issue the debt. So we can offset it using the infrastructure levy. Or if council wishes, we can stop contributing the 100,000 and we can fund it through the infrastructure levy. As you can see, there's plenty of different options in terms of where the money comes from. Uh, it's all being raised by the tax levies. So it's kind of the same pair of pants, different pockets. So whatever the strategy is, we, we will endeavor to make it the lowest impact to the taxpayer. Uh, and staff definitely will take council's direction in terms of their preference and how you want us to do that.
Absolutely. To the mayor. Yeah. Well, the infrastructure levy itself is built into his budget. And, and that's, it's there for a certain job. Adding the other 100,000 on the operating line, um, is okay, but in my mind, it's sort of a candid double dip. Um, just whatever, whatever number we pick on the infrastructure levy to fund infrastructure is the number. If we more in there and there's a valid case where it should be. So, which is, which is why I actually objected a little bit at budget time to the, to the 100 on the other side. But anyway, let's see here or there this year. But going forward, it is. I think that our best approach and the cleanest and most transparent approach is to keep your foot on the gas on the infrastructure levy and not take her on the other side myself. That's just my opinion. Um, so anyway, that, that wraps up my current discussion of finance, just in, in general. Um, I think that we're at a point here now where we would have to decide, quote my late, uh, my late father-in-law in a sermon once said, if not, if not you, who? And if not, if not this, what? And if not now, when? We summarize some sermon that I was on, partially listed. So, but I think that's the point that we're at. And I, I don't disagree with Councillor McCallum, but I also know, and I know that he fully understands that it, it isn't going to get any cheaper over time. And I'm not really the person that should be deciding what we're going to need in 50 or 60 or 70 years. But I certainly know I won't be here to be worrying about it. But, um, it's too, it's too far in the future for any of us to make some definitive statement on this. This is what we need 50 or 60 years from now. Uh, all we really know is that this building will likely still be here then. And, uh, hopefully it's not like what winter is, which doesn't serve our needs after being there for 70 years or whatever, however long it's been. So it's very hard to tell. Um, again, I, I totally, I'm totally with you. It's a big number. I think it can be managed if, you know, the money's got to come from somewhere, but it's got to come from some, somewhere sometime. And, and I don't see that doing nothing is an option because you, you can't, you can't get through life without. So those are my thoughts.
Very much. So everybody's had a chance. Councillor McCallum?
We missed the mayor. I don't care how you're Rob P, you're the paid Paul. When this is done, we're going to either raise the taxes if we take the 20-year period by 5.6%, really quickly to make these payments. If we take the 30-year payment, it's 4.3%. But we got to raise the taxes that much just to pay this. I don't care how you shuffle the money from one pocket to the other. We still got to take it in taxpayers' pockets for more money just to make the payments every year. So, you know, we sat there less than four years ago and said, trust us, we'll take care of your money. And we hit them up for two years with large tax increases. And now we're going to go and put our hands in their pockets again. And I don't think this is the building we need. That's my humble bidding. You guys move along.
Okay. Thank you. So councillor Van Vliet.
How much will this affect going forward in percentage terms? So through the mayor's councillor, Van Vliet. So we, in, as part of the previous two budgets, the increases that, like I said, we did build already 200,000 into the budget. So, I mean, it's hard to know based on which term council's going to prefer, but if we selected the, the 30-year option, uh, amortizer, which I think is by the farthest thing from what council will choose, um, the payments would be 324. So depending the strategy that we use to get it into the budget, uh, if we draw as councillor Gilmore wishes from the infrastructure levy, uh, we're contributing 2% to that per year, regardless of whether we built the fire hall or not. So potentially that means, uh, the chief has to arm wrestle with Richard on which projects are getting done and not done, uh, in terms of that year. Um, but as, as noted and kind of outlined in this, uh, the little sample projection of the infrastructure levy at the bottom, uh, that fund is growing and we are, um, contributing a significant amount to it annually with a 2% impact to the taxpayer. Um, so I do believe that, uh, that with a combination of use of reserves that are already in existence and with the infrastructure levy contribution, uh, that in terms of this project specifically, it won't be anywhere near 5% to the, to the taxpayer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So as I'm sitting here very nice, I'm mulling over just how to do this process. So I'm hearing opposition to the building in the first place. So I think that may be the first hurdle that we want to, uh, get over is, uh, whether or not it would be a motion to not move ahead with that, propose on that. Uh, if that succeeded, and obviously if that failed, then we would move on. Uh, then we would move into the recommended builder and look at that and, uh, make that decision. So I think that makes sense in my mind. First hurdle is constable or councillor McCallum's, uh, point of it's too expensive and we still should be building it. So is there a motion anywhere on that, that, uh, to not move this forward at all, to not build this fire hall?
Comment. I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do you have a second here? Okay. I do not see a second here. So that motion is done. So we're definitely not going that road. Secondly, then is, um, to look at the recommended, uh, builder, TRP Construction Limited, to the construction of the Wankford Fire Department Center for Central Fire Station. Is there a discussion on that? It's the recommended builder from our staff who have done a huge amount of work to, to prepare this, uh, for many years now. So um, after much looking at it, is there a motion to receive that or to make that motion to accept TRP as our builder? Councillor Van Vliet is making that motion. Okay? Seconded by councillor Crivlin. Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? Okay. Seeing none. All in favor of that? Oh, it's nobody. So that is carried. They are now our, um, recommended, uh, they are going to be our construction companies, TRP. Though the real issue that I can get down to in my mind is simply the payment structure. I brought.
Chief Mayor, uh, prior to getting to the payment, uh, structure, um, I, I think it's incumbent on council to put it's going to the elements of the, uh, of the tender that council wants TRP to proceed with. Again, there's the base bid. There are the three alternative pricing, um, uh, scenarios that were provided. So the base bid builds the building. The alternative number one involves farm renovations. If council wishes to proceed with farm renovations, there is an additional $200,000 that needs to add to the base bid by TRP. So that's option one. Second alternative is the HVAC, uh, uh, alternative pricing model. If council wishes to implement the, um, alternative HVAC model, uh, which is, uh, not renewed by staff, but in, in all regards, if council wishes to proceed that, uh, in that direction, then there is a $41,000 decrease in the base bid. And then the final, uh, alternative pricing model that was presented was the cistern. Um, and, uh, the recommended proposal there is that, uh, the cast in place be replaced by, uh, the, uh, pre, pre-van, uh, cisterns. It's all 33,000 increase from the base bid. And again, the option that's presented in the budget, uh, by staff on page five of the report, which is page six, one, seven of the, of the package, include the base bid and precast cisterns. But again, there's the other options of the farm reconstruction and the, uh, and the HVAC changes. So those three options can be considered and then.
Thank you, Will. Yes. So I know we have, uh, spoke about farm renovation before, but let's just cover that off once more here. Um, additional $200,000. And I know that Chief spoke briefly through it about, uh, training space. Is there anything you'd like to add on there, Chief, about your requirement or your thoughts on the barn, please?
Um, yeah, through you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, a- as you recall in previous reports, uh, we had been using a, a house on Fort Road for some time. Uh, we have since lost that facility. Um, the, the intent all along with the use of the barn redevelopment was that we could use it for training space. Uh, so as we know, I think I, beginning of this year, I also presented that mandatory certification is coming, um, as, and coming into effect as of July of this year. Uh, so training is something and certification is something that's not going away and those needs are going to continue to increase and will need to be met somehow. Uh, and the intent of the barn was to meet those needs.
Okay. I called councillor Crivlin, was, uh, made another original motion about farm. Is there any discussion by anybody in regards to changing that or discussion on it to look at it further?
Thank you, Chief Mayor. Um, no, I think this again, this is something for me that, um, is my comment is it's a miracle that we're here with the work that we've had to do in the last term. So I don't know that this is going to be perfect. Um, at the end of the day, but it's going to be the work of all of us that have come together to be able to do this today. So I'm still, uh, really, um, more in favor of the option two, uh, still proceeding with those barn, um, in light of all the information that has been provided. I, I, I hear that. But again, um, we're all sensitive to, uh, you know, making this long-term discussion. So decisions made. So that's still particularly as, uh, going forward without the barn. So thank you, uh, for that there.
Okay. Any other input on regarding the barn? It's currently, we did a vote for it to be out of this project. Councillor Van Vliet?
Thanks to you, Chief. If you're trying to utilize our barn since you purchased the property in 2019, is that correct?
That's correct. Um, as, as was discussed during the original phases of the, of the project, the barn was intended. Um, so we have, you know, there's been costs. We've, we've built props in there. Um, you know, there's been some design and engineering work that's been done as part of that process. Um, so, I mean, to go back now, we'd have to undo all of those things and absorb those costs and, and ultimately have to, to come up with something in the near immediate future.
Okay. Because as anyone knows, this equipment and everything, stuff all over the township, including, and I said it before, in this basement, which we all know slides, eventually for it to get corrected. You guys have rental units that's holding storage. You have transport. I'm rushing for it to get corrected. You guys have rental units that's holding storage, you have transport trailers, soccer fields holding whatever's in there. So if you have the barn, then that gives you more room to centralize where everything you consider, and all of the place to find it.
That's correct.
Yes.
So in the event of a fire, do you have to run everywhere to find things or could you spare, store everything in the barn? I know you guys were running with it in Scotton Fire. So you have one place and you wanted to, you have several you have to rent to if we added the barn.
No, the barn would be central storage.
Counselor Van Lee, can you put your comments here?
Sorry. I don't know. Through you, Chief, so how much do you know how much money has already been invested into the barn?
Through the mayor, approximately twenty-one thousand.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. How much, do you know how much it would cost if you went in?
Through the mayor, staff received a quote for a pole barn as discussed by council and the quote we received unfinished was two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Unfinished, is that it's only good to steal timbers?
Just to steal pole barn.
Is there concrete floor?
Yes.
So it's just a shower and it's not protecting anything?
Counselor Gilmore.
Chief, can anything that you've got in that current barn, said in the vacant area of Station Two?
Once the fire, through the mayor, yes, once the, once the fire hall is constructed, if the barn were to be demolished and everything's moved out of two, yes, we could move everything into the apparatus base of Station Two.
Man, so I think that from my perspective, where we are right now, we have enough on the go. We have no real initial short, long, medium-term plan for Station Two. I mean, there's lots of ideas, but one thing at a time. And this barn has got more lives than a chess shark. I mean, we've killed it two or three times and now every time we get a report, it comes back. Dead is dead. My view. So I'm with Counselor Crinlin. Let's move on with option two and we've got that space as soon as they can vacate, everything can be centralized there. Or as long as the next counselor do decides they're gonna stay there and then we can go from there. But we've got enough on our plate, my.
Okay, so Counselor Gilmore, you said about moving on with option two, which has the precast fire systems as quoted. Do we need to discuss the precast cisterns? Any wish to discuss that for inclusion or do you just like option two and we moved to option two? Question comments? Gilmore?
Well, I think that the previous discussion, if I remember right, that was the best thing to do. So that, that's why it's in there and that's why it's cheaper because it's the best thing to do. We don't even talk about that. The only, the only thing is the HVAC and if if the engineers all say that the way it was better and cheaper in the long term, costs more upfront, but it costs less to run, which is really where the money is in the long term, then I'm good with that. Just tired to hear about the barn and every report that comes back after we put a bullet in it.
Okay, so the barn is out. Unless you want to make a motion, otherwise do it democratically, you can make a motion, we control that, but we did do it before and it was, you receive a bullet, do you, Counselor Gilmore?
Sorry, we're gonna now.
So. Counselor Gilmore. Who's first here? Counselor Gilmore.
So I was gonna agree with Counselor Gilmore. Let's lose barn, lose the air conditioning, the HVAC system and the cisterns. So we save thirty-two thousand dollars.
I'm ready to put that over as a motion or a vote. Is there any further comment on that? Counselor Van Lee.
Through you, Mayor. Just one second. Wait, the incarnation? And if the barn will come back, it's gonna come back in the next council. It's gonna cost a lot more than it is right.
Okay. Everybody's happy? Counselor Crinlin?
Thank you. I'm just gonna go for a point of order. If the motion on, the motion been moved and we're waiting for a second there?
I'm gonna read the motion here and then we'll. Okay, so the motion that I have here is option two. I'll read option two. Council authorized the mayor to enter into an agreement with TRP Construction Limited for the construction of the Wayne Fleet Fire Emergency Service Central Fire Station and to include the precast fire cisterns as quoted. Move a second of that, please. Counselor McCollum, Counselor Van Lee, is there any further discussion? None? All in favor? That's carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we, we want to today enter the finance strategy or do we want to wait until we have that as a second? I might as well wrap her all up today in my mind. We're liking it. Start, Counselor Crinlin?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. I think, yeah, so let's just pause for a second. It's nine thirty-seven. Counselor Gilmore, other larger items to deal with today, so I guess you have. I would be happy seeing a report come back now, maybe to just look at the financing. So it's a lot you have for the ways, there's, there's kind of all the infrastructure versus the operating and that's that's quite different in terms of the approach. I don't know how much you can decide today for the go-forward. So definitely I will agree with the serial. So if we want to do serial and maybe leave the term, but I don't know how far we want to take this part of the decision tonight. I'd be okay leaving it, but again, the counsel bill, that's a solid decision that we need to still make for it. It is, that's great.
And I think the same. I think we've already done some heavy duty decision making this morning. Our treasurer said that it wasn't vital that we have this done today. We can get some further information about it. The main step is that we can actually start and financing, they worked out the next little bit, how we do that, what to the treasurer?
So through the mayor's counsel. So, yeah, we certainly don't need to decide whether it's going to be funded through the operation side of the budget or the infrastructure levy. Those things will come back in the next budget. But what I do need to indicate on the application is, is serial or amortizing and the length of the term that council wishes. So the payments might be different based on interest rates and if we decide to contribute more from a reserve, let's say, and how we, how we incorporate the payments in, that'll be a discussion for another day. However, staff would appreciate some direction in terms of the term of the diventure as well as, I think it's been noted that serial is the preference, just the term, I suppose, if council has any suggestions or recommendations or staff direction for that, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. I know that we're twenty, thirty years potential, so obviously longer waits for interest. Counselor Van Lee.
Sorry, can you start to say to the bars a little bit? I think that's it.
Counselor Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, for me, I certainly I'm at some degree that you have to do a serial, serial loan. Like I, if it was me, I'd be just grinding it out and taking the twenty here. I mean, the less interest we pay, interest is just flush down the drain. So I realize that, you know, it was a little pain upfront, but after four or five years, it kind of gets back to where it would be if we stepped out to twenty-five. So that's just my opinion. Just bite the bullet and get it done and save as much interest as possible. That's just wasting money. And then my comments earlier about just keeping it neat and transparent, funding it out of the infrastructure levy that we're already funding and don't tinker with adding more money on the operations side. But I mean, as you say, that's coming back in another budget. But that's, that's just me and this whole decision is gonna be a referendum on this decision in the election. You may very well be looking at a whole bunch of different people. So I'm only gonna say what I can say now. I hope it isn't that, but you need to be aware that this decision is gonna be a the election is gonna be a referendum on this decision. So but for now, I think we just continue to do the right thing and that would be my view that we just, we just grind it out at the front end and then free up, you know, free up money down the road for other projects and keep it steady on the infrastructure.
And so, Counselor Gilmore, I'd like to make a motion, a group by motion of serial being the financing choice. And then we can vote on that and that way that's covered and then we can look at the term, we can vote on that and then we're basically there. So Counselor Gilmore, you're making that motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that we do a serial, serial remention. I, I don't want my opinion on the twenty here. I mean, that, that could come back at the next meeting. Just, you know, because you want, you want it already. Okay, well, I'll put it on the floor and I want to hear what everybody else thinks because that's just my, my aggressive bent on debt.
Okay, but what I want to do is we're gonna first cover the serial and then we'll cover the term. That way you can vote.
All right, so I will move the.
You're putting that motion about serial on the floor. Is there a second here for that, please? Counselor Crinlin, is there any further discussion on that question, comments? Okay, seeing none. So we're voting on choosing serial repayment as the option. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. That part is finished. Second part will be the term of the repayment schedule. Is there any wish to start the discussion on that? Counselor Crinlin, sorry, Counselor, I'll go second.
Through you, Mayor. Again, maybe just back to the treasurer a bit more. So where these, where these land in the context of all of our payments that we're looking at in terms of settling this payment into, you know, the levy or smoothing it into the levy. So when I look at what's going to also be paid off, let's say in twenty twenty-four, and again, the context around our just our recent diventure is like eighty thousand, I think, less than what we budgeted for. So in turn, can you just again comment on the context maybe between the, the the size of a five percent difference? So, you know, a five-year difference. So the difference between that twenty and twenty-five year, how material is that to sort of our overall payment debt load?
Also through the mayor, Counselor Crinlin. So again, there is a number of factors and I can certainly bring a report back outlining the current debt situation and where this would put us because they don't factor it in until we actually receive the funding and the debt's in place. And it's not to say that we can't change our mind on, on what we indicate on the application. It's just a preliminary application. So we do have to indicate our preference in terms of the strategy. But we can certainly change our mind if we decide that it puts us over a threshold that we're not interested in. And depending on when we we do the diventure, we do have debt falling off in the next couple of years as well. So the difference in the fifty thousand is not going to be significant in terms of the upfront payments. And again, with the serial, they decrease each year, which increases our capacity for borrowing each year.
Okay, follow-up, Counselor Crinlin?
Through you, to my guess, all the council, is this that, you know, this is so large that it, we, I think, you know, for the next four years, we may be doing less other capital, I'm not sure. But again, in the context of things, I, you know, I, I don't want the roads and all the other capital projects to suffer. So if we can land, you know, if five extra years, make sure we continue to do the bridges, we continue to do what we've been doing in terms of momentum, that's where I want to land. So I absolutely would love to land on twenty as long as it doesn't cause, you know, zero on the front of everything else that we've built momentum on or getting the reports on. And that kind of work that we've worked so hard for the last three and a half years. So both are right. And again, I'll look for treasure to make sure that this will still keep us in those rails.
So through, through the mayor's counsel, Crinlin. So, yeah, as you can see, outlined in the bottom, so the infrastructure levy is increasing each year. Council's made some good progress in terms of our contributions to capital through the capital levy side of things. As well as we do receive some, some grant funding for, that is been strictly, although gas tax and certain funding that we receive is not eligible for fire services and fire projects, it's historically only been used for roads. So we've kind of continued down that road. So we do have some money that we receive each year that's earmarked specifically for roads and those projects. And as the infrastructure levy increases and the capital spending that is budgeted for continues to increase, the majority of that monies are spent on, on roads projects and bridge projects. So Richard will continue to prioritize and we'll continue to make progress on those projects.
Right, further, Counselor Crinlin?
No, thank you. I wouldn't just be ready to make the motion for the twenty years at this point, but I'd like to hear my other.
Counselor McCollum, you missed my, I heard your mention. Richard and Fire Chief, who probably all of you, who got the money. Well, it'll be the Fire Chief because we had one, we have to pay. So that means our infrastructure is gonna suffer. And Richard, I don't believe you should be taking a backseat on our roads and bridges and infrastructure that we need to get around. Otherwise, we'll be by a hell of an outfit for our fire department to get around because they can't get down a road. So you keep fighting and make sure we get our stuff done. That's my role.
Thank you, Counselor McCollum. And yes, Counselor Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to, to be clear and answer Counselor Crinlin's question, switching from twenty to twenty-five years sends another half a million dollars over the course of twenty years down the drain, about forty thousand dollars a year. And the other thing to keep in mind is that whatever this payment is, what we went twenty or twenty-five, that's irrelevant. It's already, it's already available in the infrastructure level. It's been available. I mean, thankfully, this has been going on for, for seven or six or seven years now that we started this. If we not done that, then we would have to levy the whole thing. So the money's already in the budget. It's been in it for a reason. And it's already there. And this project is only taking a portion of the amount that's currently there, not to mention the amount that's gonna be there in five or ten years' time, assuming that future councils kick their foot on it. Even if they don't, the money's already there. Everything else will suffer. I mean, that's not a practical option. I'm just saying, this isn't, this doesn't mean that we're gonna add four hundred thousand dollars to the tax yearly because the money is already there. It's been built in ever since we started this one. So wasting another five hundred thousand dollars for three or four years of upfront pain to then, as it decreases, using money that we already have makes zero sense in my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you. And I haven't said anything about this yet, but I also agree that I always look at something, if you have to finance it, let's say total amount of money you have to pay. So wherever we can save, that's the best, as long as we can make the payments at the front end of the mortgage. So I'm hearing twenty years. Am I, I said, Counselor Crinlin, you spoke about making a motion?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. I'll make the motion then. We put in our application twenty years based on the discussion we had. I'll move that.
Okay, I have a second here for that, please. Counselor Gilmore, any other discussion? None? All in favor? That is carried unanimously. Okay, is there any other business that we need to do in regards to the fire hall? So congratulations. congratulations to all you worked. Congratulations to the council. Congratulations to the fire chief, uh the employees, staff, everybody has worked on this diligently since we started our term. I know that for a fact, and I'm hours of respect. So congratulations, everybody. Way to go. And I think it's just normal. I'm sorry.
Uh no, when do we see the show?
Actually, I think it's very soon. I it's spring coming, so here. So uh chief?
Uh through you, Mayor. Uh we, now that this has been approved, uh we will start with our uh our ground baking ceremony planning immediately. So, okay.
Councillor Gilmore?
Just one thing. I'd just like to thank the architect and uh the other guys for putting up with all our energy fees for the last little while. Realize that you probably can tell with lots of municipality, if you you get lots of rest, and we're probably no different. We do appreciate your uh your patience.
Okay, so there is no further business. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.